The regular town council meeting of December 12th, 2023 to order at seven o'clock. Right on time, we will start with the pledge allegiance and a moment of respect.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We are a republic, we stand as one nation, on my account. And there is law, liberty, and justice for all.
Yeah, there's those. Okay, we did all the fun stuff. I know. Next on our agenda is proclamations and presentations of which we have none tonight. That brings us to item five, which is public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. We will start in person and then switch back and forth. So if there's anyone, a person who would like to come to the table, state your name and address, come on up.
John Laffin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Hello, Town Council. I come before you today looking for more information, timelines, deliverables, checkpoints on the status of my property and the contaminated water. I hear that some progress was made at the last town council from Mr. Pulling. In my conversations with Deep, it sounds as if there's more urgency put to this issue in addition to more oversight by Deep. With that said, I've yet to see anyone on my property who has reached out to me to do any sort of testing or measurement taking at my property. While I'm certainly not home at all hours of the day, I would think that someone would have tried to reach out to me before data is cleared on my private property, but maybe I'm mistaken. I look forward to hearing more information from the town based on their interactions and expectations with Langen, but also from the meetings that are scheduled with Deep, another one of which, to my knowledge, is scheduled for later this month. I will continue to advocate for myself on multiple fronts. And my hope is to resolve this issue or to push deep into giving the town an order because the town has been taking too long to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? If so, you can raise your Zoom hand or star nine. Claudette, can she be asked to unmute? I think that you have to do it that way.
Mike, can you ask Claudette to unmute? Or give her permission to unmute or unmute her?
There you go.
Okay, okay, thank you. Claudette Morehouse, 89 Merlot Way in Tallinn. I'd like to ask the town council if they could do anything about the sprinkler system for the gardens that are outside of town hall. I've asked a number of times over the last four years to see if they could fix them. I'm kind of limited as to what I can plant there. And it's getting very daunting through the hot summer months to lug water every single day. So they don't, what we do plant doesn't die. Every time I ask, it's, yep, we're looking into it. Yep, we're looking into it. And it's, it's been a long time now. And I was just wondering if there was something that they could do about fixing the sprinkler systems. Also, there's a flat plate on the light post in the corner there. I was wondering also if they could maybe do something to put a electrical outlet there. Because all I have is electrical garden tools and, you know, hedge trimmers and leaf blowers and stuff like that. So it just makes it a little bit easier to maintain that area, you know, looking forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudette. I would recommend that you send an email directly to the town manager with these requests. I think you will get a response if you send the town manager an email directly. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to participate? No? Anyone else on Zoom who would like to participate? Okay. Without any other takers, we will move on to item six, which is public hearing items, which we have none. We're cruising. The next item on our agenda is reports of boards and committees responsible to the town council. I don't know, Jacob, do you have anything that you'd like to report in on?
Yeah, make mention a couple of things. So Firehouse Committee didn't meet, but we did a site tour of the station on Garen Road to look up on progress upon that, which was successful. Good to, good to see more working on in person. And we've got a couple of meetings for that and also the Arctic Committee scheduled next week, but that's it.
Awesome. Anything for Road Sal, Brian?
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up this week, I believe, with Langdon, our consultant, I believe, Deep as well. I think we had an email, our town attorney asked to not go to the meeting. He's not needed and we've hired another council, so it'll be just an added cost happening in there. But that meeting's coming up. I met with, I met with, as directed at our last task force meeting, to meet with an expert, water softening systems in relation to changing them over to a metered system. It was an incredibly positive meeting, the details of which have been forwarded to our attorney and to Holleran and Sage. And hopefully will go a long way into providing solutions to many in our town that are having an issue with this.
Thank you. Any questions about those reports?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to reports of town council liaisons. There were a few meetings over the past two weeks. I'll start with you, Chris.
Yeah, I attended the planning and zoning commission meeting yesterday. They had expressed a need to have seat alternates, which I know the chair and vice chair are aware. And so they'll appreciate us, you know, taking action on that as soon as we can so they can, you know, fill in if there's vacancies. Otherwise, they approved a minor adjustment to the footprint of the building that is going to use a car wash down towards Big Y. They also revised the technology campus zone to the Tallinn commercial zone to allow for broader range of uses because I guess the last 10 years, there hasn't really been any interest in developing sort of the technology sector. So they're hoping that that will spur more development in the area. And then, like for you, the meeting for this month was canceled, so that's.
Great.
The economic development mission met last week. A few things on their agenda. They had someone come in and present on a maker community concept and starting one in Tallinn, focusing particularly upon entrepreneurs. But myself was new to the concept. I had to do a little bit more research upon it. It was something that they had an initial discussion on. Additionally, they did also discuss the PDC regulation change for the tech zone, which the commission was in support of. I don't know if they formally stood in a letter or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And then finally, they also discussed proposed car wash, just informationally. And then finally, the one thing they didn't want me to present to the council was that they are looking to fill two alternate vacancies. Those are many boards and commissions, but they wanted me to bring that to the council's attention. So if you know anybody who's interested in serving PDC, there are spots there.
I have not had any meetings in the last two weeks. How are you, Joe?
I, I, excuse me, I've had no meetings. So I have agricultural coming up. I'll be booked every Thursday, second, third, and fourth, the way that I'm set up here for ag and veterans. I did get your email about the reeds, December 16th at noon at Valley View Cemetery, 310 Baxter Street, Tallinn. I think that's going to be great and kind of looking forward to getting on same page with those guys. This, this will be my first week as well with them, so. If anybody needs me Thursdays, I won't be available, except the first Thursday of every month. So.
How are you, Jen?
I have no meetings.
All right. We're cruising through. So the next item on our agenda is 8.1, which is the discussion with Troop C regarding modifying the administrative position to include the rank of sergeant.
So you want to jump in?
Yes, please, he is out there.
Thank you. And, and we have Lieutenant Hayward from the Troop C Connecticut State Police here today. He's going to make a presentation and we thank him for coming here and speaking to all of us. So, as you know, here in the town of Tallinn, we do not have our own police department. By charter, in the absence of a police department, the town manager is the de facto police chief. As a result, what has always happened here in Tallinn, we higher out our police services to the resident state, I'm sorry, the Connecticut State Troopers, State Police, and we have resident state troopers here. The numbers of the staffing in the resident state trooper's office has fluctuated greatly over the years, down to as recently as well as two, to several troopers and a sergeant also as well in the past. Recently, we have four troopers, currently we have four resident troopers. One of them is an admin trooper, which I believe is a little bit of a pay grade, a senior trooper that kind of runs the office and stays in touch with town staff. That was Trooper Eklund, and we all know he did a fantastic job, but he has retired and gone on to greener pastures. And congratulations to him. However, that has left a void in our resident state trooper's office for the administrative work. And Lieutenant Hayward, come on up, LT, have a seat right here, is going to talk to us about the need for a sergeant. That being said, I can confirm that the staffing within the entire state police is low. Years, within the last decade less than that, there was a consultant study that says the resident state trooper, or I'm sorry, the Connecticut State Police should be around 1,100 troopers. My guess, they're around, they're somewhere between eight and 900 now. This is because, over the last decade or longer, there has been a reluctance from lawmakers to keep the rank and file full. I say all this because as a result, towards the end of Malloy and start of Lamont, there has been a push to hire new troopers and they have committed to that. And they have hired a lot of troopers. The problem being, and I'm sure Lieutenant will get into it, many of those troopers are extremely, not extremely, but somewhat new and inexperienced, especially when as compared to Trooper Eklund, who is incredibly experienced, especially in the town of Tallinn. So with that, thank you, Lieutenant Hayward. Go ahead and give us what you got.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Again, I'm Lieutenant Joe Hayward. I have not met most of you in here, but I'm the current commanding officer down the street at Troop C here in Tallinn. And as the town manager mentioned, in light of Kevin Eklund retiring after his 25 years of service, and he spent roughly his last eight years here in town as a senior trooper mentoring the other troopers here in the office, I just wanted to come in here and discuss the potential of taking that senior trooper position and moving it over to a sergeant. And I'll go over a couple of the key reasons why. The town manager was kind enough the other day, sent me an email with a couple of preliminary questions that maybe everybody wanted to discuss, so I can just go through quickly the preliminary questions the town manager emailed me. And of course, that aligned with what I wanted to talk about anyway, so it kind of was a home run for me. Everything I was already preparing were the questions he sent, so it worked out. The brief overview of the resident trooper program is, and the town manager explained the gist of how it works, but really what it does for the town is it guarantees you during those shifts that you have coverage that is isolated just to the town of Tallinn. They don't respond to the other seven towns in Troop C's area that were responsible for barring a major critical incident. That's an all hands on deck type scenario. But it guarantees you a trooper here in town, ready to respond to any call for service, and that just greatly reduces the state police's response time for anything. And the way that it works is typically, we end up working through the town manager and we come up with what recommended shifts, you know, what you guys are looking for for patrol coverage and what we can provide. So right now in this town, you have four resident troopers. So you have one assigned a day shift and our regular patrol structure is five days on, three days off. So that just keeps a constant rotation. So you have one assigned a day shift on that five and three. You have the one administrative trooper that works Monday to Friday, with every other Monday or Friday being an off day for them because we work nine-hour days. So they get that down Monday or Friday every other week. You have one evening shift trooper, again, on the five and three, and that's that three to 11 shift. And then you have one, what we call late eves, trooper right now, which works 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And that's, that's what we have in town right now. Again, the advantage to the resident troopers here in Tallinn, though, is they become very familiar with the town. With exception of overtime, they only investigate crimes in Tallinn, so they become intimately familiar with the people, with any problem areas. They know the concerns of the citizens. And for the citizens, what ends up happening with these resident troopers after they get some time and established in town, you get to know who they are. And instead of just seeing a trooper drive by, you know, hey, that's Joe, that's the commanding officer at Troop C. So it just brings that personal relationship to the town, which is what's great about it versus, you know, for towns that just rely predominantly on Troop C patrol, it could be a different person working the Tallinn patrol every single day. So this just gives that constant presence with the same face, same name over and over again, which just helps us get ingrained in more, more better to suited to serve the community here. So that, that's the brief overview of the resident trooper program and the construct you all have right now. The primary reason I'm looking to modify this position to a resident sergeant and what, what my ask is for is, again, like the town manager was referring to, Kevin Eklund, at 25 years' worth of experience. I think we can count on two hands the amount of troopers we have with over 20 years on the job left in the state police. So that level of expertise, knowledge, and experience is not replaceable at Troop C right now. I don't have a single trooper at Troop C with over 20 years of experience. So it's, and that's just in light, we've got a lot of turnover recently, so we are a very junior department overall. So what you have right now in town is your most senior resident trooper has three and a half years' worth of experience. That's the senior trooper in the office right now. We did post a position for, to replace Kevin as an administrative trooper, and I received two applicants. One of them has five years' experience, the other one has one year. So you could see there's a substantial gap from what Kevin was able to provide to what we're going to have in the office now. And again, it's not that these troopers aren't capable, not that they're not hardworking. They're just still learning a lot with that. Just, it's an experience and they're, they're still learning a lot about the job, but it's nothing to do with their work ethic or potential down the road. They can be Kevin Eklund, they just need another 20 years to get there. So with that, Kevin did a lot of sergeant responsibilities. So Kevin was the unofficial mentor and supervisor for this office for the past eight years. So he monitored all the criminal investigations going on in town, and he would oversee the other three troopers in the office and give them guidance and mentorship on how to proceed with their criminal investigations, which is a sergeant responsibility. But because Kevin is who he was, he took on that added responsibility himself to make sure that every investigation done by the resident trooper office was done in accordance to policy and the way it should be. Without that experience, we don't have someone that can provide that level of oversight here. And that's where a sergeant would come in. So we bring in a sergeant, they've proven that they have the experience. They've proven that they've had the knowledge because they go through a competitive promotional exam process, and they were selected amongst the other candidates that put in for promotion for that based on their job knowledge, experience, expertise. So they've already proven that they could perform at that level. And that's going to be the biggest gain we're going to get with a sergeant is we're going to continue that mentorship here in town to develop these troopers and make sure that we are doing everything the way they're supposed to be done according to policy. Really, at the end of the day, provide the best services to the citizens here in town. So responsibility difference between a sergeant and an administrative trooper is, you know, in our A and O manual, our administrative and operations manual, a sergeant's job is to direct the work of others, that's right out of our A and O manual. And the reason that's important is because, one, we go back to overseeing and mentoring the investigations in town. It's their job to do that. It's their job to direct and guide those investigations. The bright side of having a sergeant in town is they can also reach back to Troop C patrol and direct the investigations that troopers take outside of the resident trooper office. So I ran some really quick stats earlier this morning, just to get an idea of what I'm looking at. And from January 1st to December 1st, the resident troopers took about 41% of the criminal investigations in town, which means there's, you know, 59% that are investigated by a trooper from patrol at Troop C. So when you bring a sergeant in, they have the ability to directly oversee that other 59% investigations, which is important. So now with a sergeant, they can come in and check every report written case going on, and they'll follow up and make sure that every single trooper at Troop C, to include the resident troopers, are doing adequate investigations and making sure that everything is up in accordance with policy. The other big difference, when you have a sergeant here in town, any kind of complaints that come through, like to the town manager or to any one of you, if it goes to a sergeant, a sergeant has the immediate ability to go in, in review, body camera, car camera. They, they could do preliminary investigations for any allegation of misconduct or any complaint that may come in. So that can all be handled right here at the resident trooper office with a sergeant. A trooper does not have access to any of that. The other, the other advantage of a sergeant is they are the ones that are conducting the performance evals. So again, that, that's something that wants, the, the resident sergeant's writing a performance eval for the troopers in the office. They can have a conversation with the town manager to find out if there's any issues from the town related to trooper's performance, and a lot of that can be reflected in their performance evaluations. And then the other advantage to a sergeant is, a sergeant does report directly to me as the barracks lieutenant, so they have direct access up to command staff in the chain of command, whereas an administrative resident trooper reports to a patrol sergeant at the troop. So there just becomes an additional layer from the town of Tallinn to the command staff in the state police. So what I have for the most similar comparison town-wise related to Tallinn, I only looked at other Troop C towns because if we look at Vernon or Coventry, it's, it's an apples and oranges comparison just because they have their own local police department. So the nearest pier to Tallinn is the town of Ellington. So the reason I'd say that's the closest is we're within, like, size-wise, we're within five square miles of each other in terms of the overall size. And population, Tallinn is about 2,000-ish less in population than Ellington.
Just, just quickly, and just so everyone can know, Ellington does have a constable service as well. So it is kind of hard to, because they even have more law enforcement than we have.
So, and this was, this was going to be one of the points I was going to make related to Ellington is, so they have about, they do have about 2,000 more residents. Again, that's a rough number, as accurate as Google can be for me this morning. But their construct is they have a resident trooper sergeant, and then they have four resident troopers. Two of them work that day shift, five on, three off. Two of them work an evening shift, five on, three off. In addition to the troopers, they have 12 police officers. Majority of them are part-time. They have a full-time SRO and a full-time administrative police officer that works in the resident trooper office. The other thing Ellington does is, on evening shift every day, one of their part-time police officers provides coverage every night on evening shift along with that resident trooper working evening shift. Friday and Saturday night in Ellington, they hire two police officers for Friday and Saturday nights. And again, that's in addition to the resident trooper that's working. And that's, and the total number of calls, just for reference, to see how close the comparison is in terms of police workload. Tallinn, again, in the past 11 months, there were 512 report-written investigations in Tallinn from January 1st to December 1st. Ellington had 484. So we're looking at, you know, we roughly take, we've roughly had about 30 more investigations in town here. And again, similar population, similar size, and that's the level of police coverage that, that Ellington provides. If we go to the next closest overall, that'd be a toss-up between really Stafford and Mansfield, which are drastically different layouts than what we have here. Stafford had 427 reports compared to the 512. They have a resident sergeant, and right now they have five or six police officers, but they do not have any resident troopers. So then what ends up happening is, is I ran some additional numbers. It's, you know, I said about 41% of the cases in Tallinn were taken by the four resident troopers. When you go to Stafford with their construct, it's only 28% of the cases. So the majority of the cases by far are investigated by troopers out of Troop C. So you're losing that personal connection in that repeat familiarity. Mansfield's the outlier, 660 is the number they had, but their population is about 12,000 more than what it is here in Tallinn. So it's a pretty drastic difference, and that's not counting Yukon, which adds, you know, another 30,000 people during the school year. But they have one sergeant, eight resident troopers, and their town council just voted to add a ninth resident trooper. So they're going to go to one sergeant and nine resident troopers in the town of Mansfield come January. But again, so the nearest comparison is Ellington, which is the one sergeant and four troopers. And then they have several, you know, 10 part-time police officers and SRO and a full-time administrative police officer. And then, so how the sergeant's going to change our current structure? Overall, I'd say the big change is going to be that accountability piece where, where you have the supervisor that's going to be here, that's going to oversee and look into every investigation going on here. So that's the big, that's the big change, whereas an administrative trooper does not have that ability to direct anyone on patrol, to give them, to go back to Troop C and give guidance and expectations on what's going on. And when you have a sergeant that reads and reviews all the reports and all the warrants coming in through the town of Tallinn, they're going to pick up on trends and they're going to notice repeat names, repeat themes, and that's going to allow them to further direct the work of the troopers, not only here, but back at Troop C to help mitigate a lot of those concerns. So that one focal point for all reports and warrants to come through in town is just going to enhance our capability for pattern recognition and help us direct those patrol resources where they need to be. The cost breakdown in comparison to Kevin who just retired, it is a $15,000 increase. So it is $15,000 more for the sergeant than it is for the trooper. The bright side, I guess we're going to call it that, is I believe within this fiscal year, we had Kevin Hoyt, who was a top step trooper leave, and Cassidy Nuccio came into town, and that was about a $30,000 price cost savings. So it'll take some years for her to catch up to that, to what Kevin was getting paid. So, you know, in, in the immediate term, even with a sergeant, you're still saving $15,000 overall for the fiscal year. And then, the final aspect that the town manager sent was related to the MOU that he proposed and sent to Legal Affairs. I had a conversation with Legal yesterday, and their brief answer was it is still under review by them in the Attorney General's office. That being said, I discussed it with the town manager that when we bring whoever it is, whether it's a trooper or a sergeant that comes in, the three of us are going to sit down, and regardless of what happens with the MOU, we're going to come up with a product that's agreeable to all of us for, for the crime stats. And, you know, I've talked to him about the upcoming selection process. He gave me a question that's worked into the board. He's going to be invited to that interview. So regardless of what happens with the MOU, the stuff that's requested in there, we're going to work out. So if it is signed, from my point of view, I'm going to look at it and say, well, okay, we're, we're doing what was asked anyway, so it won't really change anything about how I'm operating. But I say overall, that was the gist of it. Again, the key takeaway for me and the advantage to a sergeant is we lost a lot of experience with Kevin. And the only way I can provide you with a similar level of experience and knowledge is with a sergeant. And that's just due to the nature of our agency being junior and very inexperienced. Again, our most senior trooper in your office has three and a half years of experience. And that, that's the big thing, is that accountability, that job knowledge and that direct oversight of 100% of the cases that come in through town, that sole source of reviewing everything. I think will dramatically increase the level of police services we can provide for the town. So any, any questions, please?
Go ahead, Jen.
A sergeant, what's the criteria for it? I mean, is it like a certain number of years or?
So the minimum is it is four and a half years after probation has ended as a trooper. So that ends up being five and a half years, and you're eligible to take the sergeant's exam. That being said, the most junior sergeants we have in the agency right now have about eight and a half years of experience.
Okay, and then. The other, so the original position was for administrative trooper, correct?
Correct.
And what's the criteria for that?
Just have to be a trooper.
Oh, so there's.
So there is, there's no years of experience requirement, there's none of that exists. It's, uh, like I said, the. I have the, one of the two candidates I put in for it has one year of experience. And that's not even one year of patrol experience, that's one year total. Like, they went to the academy and they've been out here for. A handful of months. So there is no. Criteria. Whereas at least with a sergeant, in the most junior, the least experienced sergeant you would get would be eight and a half years of experience. Uh, just through talking to people, I think realistically you're looking at. Uh, people that are interested in coming here as a sergeant, you're looking at fifteen plus years of experience. And I'd also add on to that, uh, we don't typically see a lot of attrition at the sergeant rank in resident trooper towns. Once they get into a resident trooper town that they like, they tend to stay a long time. So with a sergeant, you're more likely to get another Kevin Eklund, someone that's here for five, six, seven, eight years. With a trooper, because we're so junior, there's still a lot of movement, a lot of our specialized units, so. You may see more attrition at a trooper, where they'll come here for maybe two years, gain a lot of great experience, and then they'll go be a detective in major crime.
Thank you. So, Jen, yeah, yeah, Jacob.
Yeah, um, I have a question. So. Uh, first of all, I'm glad to hear there's a little bit of, you know, movement on the, on the crime report. Um, I think that would be a great, especially, you know, in an administrative role, to be armed with that information. So I hope it all pans out up on the state level, and I'm glad either way that there, there seems to be a plan to address that. So. That's great to hear. Um, I guess my question speaks to. Um, you know, sergeant be more administrative, which I, I definitely has, has an important role. Um, but in terms of like. Support for the troopers that are out up on the street most of the time, would a sergeant be? Available for, for backup and?
Yes. Yep, so that sergeant will still, that sergeant will absolutely still respond to calls in town.
Okay.
Will still, so and I'll use, um. Sergeant Strogoff in Stafford, who, he's the most recent one that was an administrative trooper, and about a year-ish ago. Uh, Stafford agreed to change it over to a resident sergeant. And he responds to calls frequently. He will still, uh, he'll still even take on some investigations himself. It's just, so, so the short answer is yes, where they still do respond, just like the administrative trooper, or just like Kevin Eklund did, they'll still respond to calls. They may not always take the criminal investigation personally, but they're gonna be on scene, directly overseeing, and making sure that everything that's supposed to be done is being done.
Okay, and that's where that support piece comes in, especially for the younger, more junior troopers.
Yeah, but we are, yeah, but we would not have someone, uh. Sitting here, and just because they're a sergeant, have them go, I don't have to go to the crash right down the street. Like, nope, they're gonna go, they're gonna render aid, make sure the scene's safe, secure. Uh, they will still absolutely be a. A first response force here in the town of Tallinn.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead, Lieutenant.
So just kind of what I was describing to you before, you know, my background. Bachelor in Criminal Justice, served as a police officer in Florida. I, I would hope that my policing background's a little bit more knowledgeable than, uh, anyone on council or even, uh. Just a regular resident in town. I think the most important thing to do with policing is to put yourself. In the trooper shoes or in the police officer's shoes. Would you mind just getting, delving into a little bit how, you know, if we were all gonna be troopers here? Um, delving into it a little bit for some of the other, uh, council members. What a sergeant actually would be. For us, what, what the most important thing that a sergeant could serve as? Um, just to kind of give us a little better idea of what, you know. Um, adding knowledge policing-wise, their experience, you know, those, those types of things.
And we're talking how that's gonna help the town council, but. The primary benefit is the town manager will have a direct point of contact that they can ask any and all questions related to all the law enforcement activity going on in town. And they can receive that. Direct, accurate, knowledgeable answer from a supervisor. Where a supervisor has the authority and capability to make decisions, um. So when the town manager calls. And they, they're talking to the sergeant, th- that sergeant has the authority and capability to give direct answers. And we can know and be fully confident that that's accurate, and that's in accordance with policy, and that we'll be able to execute on, on whatever conversations the town manager would have with a sergeant. I think that would be the greatest thing, the concern from him, go right to a supervisor who can give him an answer right then and there. And then turn out and, and, uh, direct our resources where they need to be based on conversations with the town manager.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ken. Um, so more just to comment, uh, something I wanted to piggyback off, of Jacob for. Um, certainly, the more data that we can get, the better, so that way we can continue to ensure that Tallinn's a safe community and to ensure that the resident troopers have the resources that they need. And so getting that information is definitely helpful to the council to be able to make those decisions. Um, cause we wanna make sure the town's safe as it can be, you know, after the street takeover and car breakers and things like that. I think there's like a. The general community concern wanting to make sure our town continues to remain safe. Um, so I think that data would definitely help. Um, and I certainly, you know, appreciate your time coming here and explaining everything about the sergeant as well, cause, um, trooper acting brought a lot of experience to town, which, um. I think was a benefit to the town.
Right, again, he, and thank you for saying that, and Kevin was acting at a sergeant's level for the past eight years, no question about it. He was doing a lot of sergeant duties here for the town.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I'm trying to understand logistics here when you talk about our structure versus Ellington's structure.
Yeah.
And it sounds like Ellington has, has quite a bit of overlap between, you know, two troopers on in the daytime, two troopers on at night. Um, I don't know if they're working, they work the same hours or the same days, or if there's like a, an overlap, a few days and then?
It's a what, it's so, yeah, so the way that works, when we have two on day shift, on two on evening shift, on that five and three, uh, their, their schedules are offset. So twice a week, they'll work the same day. And then the other three days in their work week, they work alone.
Okay, so in our case, um, where we've got one of the day shifts, he's working five, let's say five and three.
Five, five days on, three days.
How, how is the, how's the three days off gap billed?
Well, by Troop C.
So Troop C takes over?
Right, assuming, assuming that's on. A weekend, uh, you know, if the three days off are, say, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Then whether it's a trooper or a sergeant, there's still someone here in town.
Okay.
On day shift, that, I don't know if I explained that well.
So even if, uh, even if our resident troopers. Off that day, there's still a state Troop C's?
Correct, so our twenty-four seven, there's a trooper from Troop C assigned, uh, to the town of Tallinn.
Okay.
In addition to that, they also have responsibility on the interstate here on I eighty-four.
Okay.
But they are assigned to respond to calls in Tallinn and do whether there's a resident trooper here or not, so. And, and this will kind of lead into something with the resident troopers, uh. The way it works is the resident trooper. Will investigate all the, you know, more significant criminal investigations. And a patrol trooper, the person working out of Troop C, will come and assist them, taking statements and photos, stuff like that. But the investigation will remain with that resident trooper. Typically, what we do for a minor, no injury type crash, we'll let the Troop C trooper take that. Which is why you see that, you know, fifty-nine percent number I threw out there.
Right.
It's because they'll take the less serious investigations in town to free up the resident trooper to continue to do follow-up and all that, and, and. Be more engaged with the community.
Okay.
So there, there's always coverage from Troop C twenty-four seven.
Okay, well, that, that answered that question. So then the second question, Adam, you talked about your percentage, I was surprised to hear you say that. Ellington, which has like a lot more troopers, resident troopers.
Yeah.
Um, they're only covering twenty-eight percent of the cases or?
No, it was Stafford. Stafford, which Stafford had a lot less. Um, Ellington was about the same. Ellington.
Cause you'd think it'd be a lot higher.
You know, Ellington was forty percent.
Twenty percent, so why, why, if Ellington has so many more troopers or is Troop C, and then, I'm just, from my own knowledge, I'm not trying to trick you here.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, why, if they have more resident troopers, how come they don't have a higher percentage of?
So they have, so overall, they have, it both have four troopers that were out. So we have four resident troopers, Ellington has four resident troopers, plus the sergeant. The sergeant doesn't traditionally take a lot of investigations themselves.
Okay.
And then the. And then the police officers in Ellington, that supplement on evening shift predominantly, uh, most of them work a shift a week. So we just can't assign them complicated cases because they don't have the time to do the follow-up. So. Then, you know, you'll see a lot of those cases be assigned to the Troop C patrol trooper that's covering the town of Ellington.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
But they're really, they're there to have. That immediate response. So if you call nine-one-one for, you know, a domestic violence situation. You know that a police officer's gonna be there very quickly. Instead of, you know, waiting for. Someone to drive from Mansfield up to Tallinn.
Colleen, I know that you're on. Zoom, did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
Hey, um, I'm good, I'm just looking in, but thank you, if I do, I'll just raise my hand though. Now. I just can't say, um, I'm really being polite, I'm gonna get heated.
Yep. Okay, I, I did have a few questions too. Lieutenant, how long have you been tr- assigned to Troop C?
Um, as a lieutenant, I've been here since March.
Right.
Um, previous to that, though, I spent. About five years on patrol as a trooper. I did. And then I went to Ellington as a resident trooper, and then I did about a two-year stint in our crash reconstruction unit. Uh, I came back to Mansfield as a resident trooper after leaving that. Promoted to sergeant, where I was a sergeant here at Troop C for a year and a half before promoting to lieutenant. So. All in all, I have about nine years or so of my career here at Troop C.
Um, how long was the previous lieutenant at Troop C?
Uh, the one I replaced was here for. Can't say definitively, but four or five months.
Four or five months. Uh, and I, thank you, cause I think that, um. That was what I was, uh. Trying to get at, is how, how much, uh, leadership consistency has been at Troop C. Uh, we know that you guys do a great job, it's just, um. We, the MOU that has come from the town has been with Troop C for about how long now, per review?
Uh, not at Troop C, with Legal Affairs.
Okay, so how long has it been at Legal Affairs? Thank you for the correction.
Um, since the summer. Typically, what you do is Legal Affairs takes it, and then they'll, uh, wash it out with the troop and say, hey, this is what they, they wanna, uh, do when the troop will provide feedback.
Okay. I, I think the. Uh, statistics that you were able to provide today were great, and I think you've heard a lot of my colleagues share the same kind of excitement, here's the numbers. Um, you might be familiar with the, uh, police report that we get as a town.
Yes.
On a regular basis. Um, we got one with the town manager's report in this particular packet.
Right.
It doesn't have any of the information that you just told us. So that's part of our excitement here, is that. Um, it seems like some of these numbers that we really wanna see and wanna understand better.
Yeah.
Are coming our way. And I think that's a big component to the MOU request. It's one of the three major components in the MOU request. Um, so I think you're hearing a lot of feedback from town council, and I know you've heard it from our town manager, we want those numbers.
Right.
Um, I also hope that those numbers can help us, um, better ensure that our police coverage in town is. Just right.
Right.
We don't know, right? We're hearing Ellington is a very different numbers, Stafford is kind of different in a different direction, like, we just, we don't know, um. What our needs are, because we don't have any of those numbers. So I just wanted to make sure that you heard directly from us.
Yeah.
That we want those numbers.
Right.
And I think those numbers are gonna help us, but are also gonna help our residents, state troopers.
Yeah.
Um, to really. Make sure that there's a lot of community building, that we can show trends, that we can show that we're making a difference here. Um, and some of the anecdotal stories that we hear that are really positive would be great to reinforce with those.
Yeah, and again, as one, as soon as I can, I get that. Administrative person permanently back in town, I'll have a meeting with the town manager and that. Trooper or sergeant, and we'll, we'll absolutely come up with a product that, uh, is agreeable for everybody, that we can provide you on that monthly basis.
That would be great.
It's just, so what you get right now is the same, so all eight towns that I'm responsible for get the same dataset for their respective town.
Yes.
Um, and then what a lot of the resident sergeants do is through conversations, uh, and again, this is typically done. By a resident sergeant through conversations, whether it's the selectman or a town manager, they work out what that specific town wants for this kind of stuff. And they provide it for them. So it's all done. It's done in every other town. So I can assure you, again, regardless of the MOU, it's going to be done in Tallinn.
Sure, and, and I, I'm very excited to hear that. I think, um, our town manager is excited, and the town council's excited. So I think that's a, that's a really great step forward. Um, I did just, I had one clarif- quest, clarification question from what you said. When we were ta- when you were talking about the average cost of a trooper or administrative trooper and a sergeant, you said that, uh, sergeant would cost, uh, fifteen thousand dollars more. Did you mean more than, uh, Trooper Eklund?
Yes.
Okay, so Trooper Eklund was sort of at the top of the pay scale for his, for his position.
For a trooper, so we don't, so we don't have varying pay scales. Uh, there's not like a, you don't get more money for being an administrative resident trooper.
Yeah.
You're just, but, trooper's a trooper, right? So it's, so a top step trooper, whether it's patrol or an administrative trooper or in major crime, they all get paid the same.
Sure, they're all in the same.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
But we get billed more. Like, like Eklund costs a lot more than? Yes, because, right, cause this, so he's, yeah, right, yeah, so the years on, yes, there is a pay scale for years of service, which, uh. Eight years of service is the maximum pay for a trooper at eight years of service.
Okay.
And that is the comparison I did, right, was that eight years of service trooper to a, what would be. Uh, eight or more year of service sergeant. So I went, uh, the top pay to the top pay is the comparison that I gave for the fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, are we, do we have, um. Fringe benefit differences as well? Or is that, that's soup to nuts?
No, so the, the fringe right now is like forty-seven percent, forty-seven and a half percent-ish.
Is it the same?
It is the same for a sergeant, that fringe rate applies to every trooper in the office. And then the benefit you get is for your. Two highest paying troopers or sergeants, there's, there's an eighty-five. There are eighty-five percent, so you get the fifteen percent discount on the highest two. So your eighty-five percent would apply to the sergeant. And then the, uh, highest paying trooper in the office.
Sure, so is that fifteen thousand dollars that count for the eighty-five percent?
It's, and that's, that's comparing, uh, the trooper and the sergeant at the eighty-five percent. So it, it's a, it's a wash, really, cause it's a percentage, right? So it'd be fifteen thousand roughly either way.
Okay. Excellent. Um, and one more, just kind of technical or. From my knowledge, question, do our residents, state troopers here in, in Tallinn, uh, respond to calls on eighty-four?
So the only, so the. Simple answer, yes, if. There's a report of a crash with injuries.
Okay.
Um, just because they're able of getting out there and rendering that immediate aid.
Yep.
Um, so if something's coming in with injuries, we're not gonna let that person go without aid and delay that emergency response. Uh, but they're the first ones to clear, as soon as the patrol trooper gets there, that resident trooper's gonna come back to town.
Correct. And, um, about. How much, uh, patrol time? I don't know if I'm using the French terminology, but I'm trying to get a sense of how much time, uh, sergeant would spend kind of in the office. Not in the community versus a trooper.
I would say that would be no different than what you've seen from Kevin Eklund over the past eight years.
We should, well, what?
I'd say, you know, if, if I had to guess, I'd say you're looking at probably half of a shift doing administrative work, reports. Warrants, uh, do whatever administrative duties, pistol perimeter reviews, et cetera. And the other half of that shift would be out in the community, and just making sure that, uh, you know, responding to calls or. Come into the various town meetings at night after hours that, that's had here, you know, there, there'd be an expectation with a sergeant that. They would not be an unfamiliar face here at town council meetings and things like that. And just so we're clear, every shift can be.
I'm sorry, Alex, um. If you could just let me finish.
Oh, go ahead, no problem.
Thank you. Um. Okay, I think, uh, what about for a, a trooper, how much administrative time for a trooper in the office versus outside the office?
So, and thi- this is where the experience is gonna come into play.
Yeah.
Um, for them to accomplish some of these administrative tasks realistically, because they, they just don't have the experience. It's probably going to increase with that junior of a trooper time in the office, just because, you know, a task that took Kevin thirty minutes is gonna take a junior trooper two hours.
Okay.
So I'd say realistically, it'll probably increase.
Does anybody have any questions for a second, Ken?
If this is open up to sergeant?
If this is open up to sergeant, how, how many sergeants increase the pool of applicants? I mean, how many sergeants do you have with Troop C who potentially be applying for this position?
So I know two sergeants assigned to Troop C right now would apply. And there's another sergeant who has eighteen years of experience, who lives in town, that told me he would also likely apply. So I know of three sergeants that are definitely interested, should it go that way. And there could be more that I just haven't spoken to.
And I'm sorry, how, how many total do you have with Troop C sergeants?
Right now at Troop C, I have seven sergeants and a master sergeant.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions else?
No, I just wanted to clarify that every shift is different than the last shift. Correct, thank you. Can't be fifty-fifty all the time.
Right.
Every day is going to be different.
Right, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Just the two clarifying questions. One, can sergeants from outside of Troop C apply for this resident trooper program in Tallinn if we opened it up to sergeants?
Yes, it goes out statewide.
Okay. And the other thing I just wanted to clarify, so when you said the fifteen thousand dollar cost comparing Eklund, who was sort of at the top of his step within his grade or whatever, is that comparing it to a sergeant that's also at the top of there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, yeah, that was top pay to top pay comparison, yes.
Thanks. So, yeah, just one more question. So basically getting a sergeant, does that kind of put us on even playing field to what we were when Eklund was on the crew?
It increases the capability, because Eklund could not review warrants, could not review reports, so he didn't, he didn't have the capability to direct troopers from Troop C Patrol regarding their investigation. So anytime someone out of the barracks at Troop C took a criminal complaint in town, he had no authority to go and tell that trooper, hey, you should do this, or I want you to go check this house for that. He had no authority to do any of that. So you're gaining a lot with that sergeant in terms of the ability to oversee and direct investigations.
Okay, so, sounds great. Because I, I think to your, to your point, when, when we start getting some statistics in here, that we can compare towns, then maybe we can look at our weaknesses a little bit more and figure out how to fill in those weaknesses compared to like how other towns have managed
Yeah.
these sort of problems.
So this, I do want to clarify, the statistics, that they would not be running the other seven towns to the level that, you know, so you wouldn't get the report for the other seven towns we cover to the level of detail that we're requesting for Tallinn, right? So that administrative sergeant or trooper would run the additional data for Tallinn and provide that to the town manager. It would be the same generic data that you're getting right now, where you get the overall calls for service comparison with the other towns, but it's a time-consuming process to run that data. So to ask them to do it for the other seven towns would take away from their time being out in the community and engaging.
But when the other seven towns request that data as well?
Nope, they don't all, no. And, and what they get is, again, every town gets the same generic data set that Tallinn's been getting, and the other towns will have their own unique stuff that they're looking for. Again, similar to what you guys are looking for, but it's not all the same. Ellington might want different stats than Mansfield wants, then, you know, so they could all want different stuff, slightly variable. Some towns want nothing more than what they get.
Do you have another question?
No.
Okay, because we've already gone around the ways.
That's good.
Brian, could you talk to us about what the process is next? It's great to hear from lieutenant. This has been very informative.
Sure.
What now?
Okay, first, thanks lieutenant, you did a great job in preparation and presentation. I really appreciate that, and thanks, it's not easy. Well, you know, really what this comes down to is it's an operations decision. And when we do our operations budget, we look at the number of troopers that we have, and we figure it out during the budget process, how much we want to spend on the resident trooper's office. When we, when we go through the operations process, we'll look at the many variables presented to us. But as, as has been discussed here, us, like many resident trooper towns, and this is no fault of lieutenant at all, as you're bringing up, have no idea if we need one shot, one trooper, two troopers, three, four, eleven team troopers. We have no idea what we need. We have no data to show us that. Every town is just guessing. Hence the wide array of no true resident troopers in the town of Wellington, right next door to what Ellington has there. And the worry is, not with the state police, but with the Attorney General, they don't want to sign the MOU, because the other towns will want that same crime report as well. And I think you're going to see a move to that at any rate. Thankfully, we have Troop C that's willing to start providing that data to us. Anyway, so, so we'll be happy to have that. We can look at trends week to week, month to month, year to year, this year versus ten years ago, and we'll start to be able to develop that and see where we are. And, you know, we could say we need more troopers. It could say we need less troopers. Again, a lot of times, once you have that data, and you can apply that data to insulting teams to really determine what is the right number. What we can look at best is trends when that comes in. And right now, we don't. So it's going to go to the operations process, to your question, Jared, when we're doing our operations budget and, and see what we can afford. Are we, the, the question is, with a sergeant here, are we more or less safe with a sergeant? We don't know. Are we less safe without, you know, having Eklund here? We don't know that. Are we more safe? We don't know. So, so we'll do the best we can. I have no problem with a sergeant here, and in fact, I know some of the ones that would apply, and they'd be absolutely fantastic. And I'd be so happy if they were here. But it should be known to council that this town fought hard to get rid of the sergeant's position out of the resident trooper's office due solely to cost. And so it's a balancing act. I don't know where it's going to go. We'll discuss it during the operations process. We'll all have that opportunity. Again, I, 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 I've put it out there, sign the MOU, and I'll, I'll, I'll bring a sergeant in at least till the end of the fiscal year. And, you know, each, and to be honest with you, every year, it's year to year of what, how we're going to staff our resident trooper's office. If we had gotten cut just a wee bit more this past budget process, a trooper would likely have been the first thing we'd go. It's easy to, it's easy to cut a trooper, and I don't say that lightly. If I'm going to cut a staff member, they're out, they're without a job. I cut a resident trooper, one, we don't know, there's, we don't know if it has any effect on our town safety whatsoever. We don't know what, what, what effect it's going to have. But if we cut a resident trooper, they're going right back to work in, in, in Troop C or wherever they, they end up. So it's, it's, and it's, and they're expensive. We look at that a lot, the, the savings that we've gotten over the last couple of years with the, when they adjusted the rates is, is great. And, and certainly a good move for the, the resident troopers to as holistically to retain their positions, and I believe thirty-nine towns have resident troopers around the state, I believe. The thirty-nine other towns that happened as well. So the savings is good for now. Economically, I think it makes sense. If they were to tinker, and the price were to go up, we'd start looking at other policing options here in our town. But right now, certainly they're the best option.
Just want to equip.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just, for council, those here, I just, the sentiments of the town that I've heard while running for this position, in my own opinion is, I don't think that there should be a price to sleep peacefully at night. These gentlemen do an outstanding job, and thank you for coming here. And, but I don't believe that it's something that should be priced, especially if a sergeant is going to help the safety of the members of this town and our children. So, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, just a quick question. Does the town be charged when a non-resident state trooper shows up to cover a crime? No, no, not at all. In fact, I would say the resident troopers are actually really good about showing up to stuff when they're not even in their resident trooper function, you know, after, you know, or events on, they're not working, but Eklund would be at the, you know, whatever event on the, you know, Harvest Fest, and and they're, they're really, really accommodating to show him. But no, we don't get billed for the other stuff. But at the same time, when there's no resident trooper here,
We're covered.
We're covered, but we don't have a resident trooper here. Yeah, we're covered no matter what. Troop C's here in town. And, you know, in my, in my previous position with the state desk, you know, some higher-ups there said to, to me directly, why do you have so many resident troopers? You have the trooper right here in town, Wellington has. Nah, yeah, yeah, yeah. And my answer was, the town is comfortable with four resident troopers. But, you know, that, that has fluctuated greatly. And it's any way the wind blows, because again, we don't know anything about data, whether, we don't know if bird leads have gone up, gone down, no, I don't have anything. And so it's, it's frustrating that all these towns are just guessing what their staffing needs.
So what, what you're paying for is an immediate response, right? When you have a resident trooper in town on shift, you know that there's a trooper in Tallinn right now. When you don't have that resident trooper program, you don't have them working, the person assigned Tallinn can be on the Willimantic line in Mansfield backing up a trooper at a domestic out there. So then when the domestic comes in in Tallinn, it's a twenty-minute drive, lights and siren to get here, instead of a five-minute drive from this office. That's what you're paying for, is that immediate response, that safety and security of knowing when you call nine-one-one and you have a resident trooper in town, they're going to be there extremely quickly.
Brian, a question about the, your comment about how the town previously want to change from a sergeant to a resident state trooper. Can we give ourselves, as the town, the flexibility to not, if, if we chose to have a sergeant in the next fiscal year, can we make sure that whatever contract we come up with has the flexibility, so we don't have to fight again?
Of course.
If we needed to or wanted to make a change?
Yeah, that, that's, again, we can make a change year to year.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
It's not as easy as it looks, but we can do that.
Okay. Thank you. Just always get to learn from past experiences. Well, thank you so much, Lieutenant, for coming tonight. This was very informative. I know I've been on council, this is my second term. We've never had someone from Troop C besides Kevin Eklund come maybe just two or three times. So it's really wonderful to see a face in here. I hope we can see your face or someone else's face more often. I think, I think it gives us a lot of information that we get, we bring back out to our community. And the other comment I, I would make is that the resident state troopers that are here in town, they, they do a lot to create those relationships you were talking about.
Yeah.
And that's a wonderful thing. It is wonderful when we walk down the green for Harvest Fest and people are greeting the troopers by name, and, and not just Trooper Nuccio who grew up in town, et cetera, but other troopers are familiar to our residents. And I think that, that's a really wonderful way to build communities. Thank you for that.
Completely agree. And I would just say, if, if there's ever any Troop C related issue that you guys want to discuss, send the request. I, I can, if you want me specifically, I can, for the most part, almost always work my schedule to be available. That's part of my job as lieutenant. I, I would tell you, I think if you go with a sergeant, you'll never need to hear from me again. The sergeant will certainly be more than capable of addressing any and all concerns. If you go with a trooper, you're probably more likely to want to hear from you again. But anytime you have a meeting that you want to discuss anything with the resident trooper program, police coverage in the town, certainly just send the request to me, and I'll figure out how to manipulate my schedule to be here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that offer.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, you're welcome. Thanks a lot. I appreciate the time today.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, she was Yeah. She was only going to stay. I don't give her, this trooper, she's a family member, I suppose. All right. So next is Scott Lappin for the hot seat, right?
Well, I wouldn't call it a hot seat. You were all very welcoming. He might define it as such, but Scott, one of the So those of you who haven't met, Director Lappin, he's the director of our Department of Public Works. In your packet, you have some materials that explain much of what his career has entailed and much of what Tallinn does. I found it, to reread it again, very informative, especially about the elevation of Tallinn, having an average around nine hundred, and looking at Burnham and Ellington around two and three hundred. You know, so whenever the weather person says upper elevations, they're, they're certainly talking about the town of Tallinn, and we, we feel it here. Much like the Director Hancock did at the fiscal, last council meeting, very adeptly. Director Lappin's going to do the same thing, and that's introduce himself. His, his number two cannot be here today. He's going to be out for a while due, due to a personal matter. So I'm sorry, I intended for him to be here, so it's not happening. But Director Lappin's going to do just fine. You should know that I work very closely with Director Lappin. I'm sure must have his chagrin on a daily basis. And, and we're in touch on everything. In my previous career, I noticed the exposure that a governing body can have when there's a problematic DPW. And, and a lot of that is around, just when something goes bad in DPW, there's a lot of political trouble. So, so he's, he's very important to me. He's at my right hand almost every day. And with that, I give you Director Lappin. Thanks, Scott.
Brilliant, thank you. I've had the opportunity to meet most of you. Scott Lappin, Director of Public Works. We took a tour on Thursday. Gave you an opportunity to see where we work out of, some of the equipment we've worked with. Brief, you, everybody, you saw what was in your package, brief biography on me. I've been in Public Works for about thirty-five years. I've just started my ninth year here with Town. I was in Windsor Locks previously as a director. Prior to that, I was in South Windsor, two different tours, if you will. One is middle management, one is I started with, has summer help. So I've seen it all. There's not much that anybody can do here that surprises me, although there are days I just didn't expect that. Obviously, I truly enjoy my job, or I would have changed professions years ago. It has its upsides and downs, just like any job does, but I work with a group of people. I oversee, obviously, the entire department. We have our operations manager, who Mr. Foley has spoken about, he's going to be out for a little bit. He is our cemetery sexton. We have four cemeteries in town. We, he handles most of the sales. We do all of the excavations for burials, whether it's for cremations or full burials. We deal with numerous funeral homes, making the arrangements. There are times where they call us, and it's kind of a hurry, you know, we've got to get this done this weekend. And we have staff that, you know, will bring in on overtime, and those, those charges go right over to the, you know, the families. Paul also, I would say, three years ago, I approached Paul and I said, you know, we have a town tree warden who, at the time, was just about retired. And he and his wife were doing some traveling, and it'd be nice to have a deputy tree warden. I'm also a deputy tree warden, but it was in line with what Mr. Russell does, being out on the road more than I am. So Paul took the six-week course. He passed with flying colors. He lets me know that he got one point higher on the test than I did, so you know, I have to take that on the chin. But he's done a great job for us all overseas, both divisions, the parks and facilities, as well as the highway. He lets them do their, their day-to-day stuff. But in one of the supervisors' absence, Paul, he fills right in for them. Most of the time, when something comes up, whether it's through town manager relaying to me that, you know, we have a special project we have to do, I'll sit down with Paul. If it's really involved, we'll call in the supervisor, just so everybody's on the same page. Most of the time, Paul will relay the information to them, so that there's a process that we follow, so it doesn't get lost in the show. Other than that, prior to Mr. Foley coming on board, Lisa Hancock was interim manager, and she asked for kind of a brief overview, which I've included in your packet, the the numerous tasks that we do. It's, sometimes it seems as though it's a little overbearing, but we, we still step up to the plate. We've had new things put on our, our plate again. We have a ice skating rink that will be going up this year. We have the grass mat, which goes down, comes up, goes down, comes up, and it takes, takes some time, but, you know, it's, it's well worth it, in my opinion. The guy seemed to have a good handle on it. We first started with it, it was a little tedious, but things have gone pretty well. Things have gone um, pretty well. As far as operations, years ago, prior to me starting here, the town um, installed geothermal heating and cooling. In this building in T I X. They really needed somebody to oversee the project, uh, so um, the previous director reached out to Dennis Carter, who is our parks. And facilities supervisor. Uh, he wasn't supervisor at the time, so but he became uh, the clerk of the works, if you will. He was the uh, project manager. Did a great job with it, knows the ins and outs. Um, and when that project came to fruition. Uh, um, two town managers ago, Mr. Wergner approached him and made him the supervisor of the parks and facilities. Dennis uh, has done a good job. He's a pretty even keel guy. He's made it clear that he doesn't like to be involved with cemeteries, but he still does it in Paul's absence about. Um, it takes a special person to be able to sit there with a grieving family and, you know, be able to be as uh, um. Accommodating as as you have to be. Um, with that being said, while Dennis was promoted. The position was never filled. Dennis's spot was never filled, so we're actually a laborer short. I have tried for numerous years to get that position filled. It will be in my operating budget again this year. Um, the, one of the issues we have is with not being fully staffed. And when it comes to such as a snowstorm. One of my supervisors has to get in there. If we have an accident, if we have somebody else who calls out sick, now we're behind the eight ball. Whereas if we're fully staffed, then I can have my supervisors riding around looking at the different. Areas of concern. It it makes it much easier and we're coverage is much better if we do have somebody call up sick.
This this didn't get filled because of capital uh, capital issue or just?
No, it's operational, they just uh. It's never been filled.
And in the budget and has never been approved until to fill that position.
Okay.
There's been no money allocated for it.
It gets it gets to the horse trading at the end and.
Yeah, easy.
So, um, that being said, um. We had a uh, the survey done. Town council had requested after. They had looked at the equipment for the fire department. They had requested doing a a survey uh, by an outside source. Uh, of public works equipment. They came in, they saw um, all of our our uh, good and bad. And they came back with a report. They said that they felt there were three or four pieces that, uh, even though they're paid for. Um, they would not recommend us replacing once their useful life was was met, which we agreed with. I mean, we have a. Uh, excavator which, when they used to do a lot more drainage projects, it was well worth it, but we don't. Uh, that's that's something that we typically will contract out now, just because there's so much. Liability between trench boxes and and this and that. You hit a fiber optic cable. So we we pick and choose what we do. We had, uh, as I mentioned last week, we had, or two weeks ago, we had that grater that was frozen solid. It couldn't move it. It's been forty or fifty years old and. They've been utilizing another service. The the downside to that is you get your roads graded once a year and that's it. Um, with the amount of rain that is expected Sunday night until Monday, all I could picture was we're going to have terrible washouts. There were washouts on the edges of the road, but it wasn't, you know, gorgeous like we had in the past. So we're able to go out and dress it with front end motors and things like that. Um, part of the report. Said that we needed to step our game up and all the money that we spend on this equipment. Should be um, entered into a program so that when somebody here says, well, how much you spend that piece of it? I have to reach out to a mechanic and they pull out the folder and they start looking through it and saying, okay, you know. Well, this is how much we spent, you know, and the inner bottom is something. Um, so they had suggested that we have somebody that can do this uh, data entry. Um, so we were looking at doing a part-time secretary. You know, again, for public works, they used to have part-time secretary a long time ago who took care of all this stuff. And, you know, Crunchtime came and it was, again, those are the easy ones to to knock on, but. Other than that, if you guys have any uh, any questions or about me, my history?
It's good history, yeah.
It's a lot of history.
Go ahead, Greg.
Another question, just I found it. Uh, thank you for writing up everything and I found uh, learning a little bit more about your background and how much experience you have in public works. I think is a huge asset to the town. So thank you for putting it together. Thanks for coming and speaking with us.
Certainly.
Yes, uh, and thanks for um, giving us a tour of a couple of these facilities. Last week it was really good to see all that up close.
Sure.
Um, so just one, one question, my favorite subject, uh, Town of W P C A.
Welcome back.
Yeah. Um, so I know it's it's a relatively small and older system. Uh, it's been a few years since I've been. Close to that. As far as the condition of that system, is there anything that we should be aware of? Given that that does have problems that that has big implications for residents that depend on it?
Well, when I started here.
Yeah.
We had a um. A company, I believe it was Water Plant that was here and. Once I was put as the administrator, made the administrator for W P C A. Uh, we reached out to some different uh, engineering firms and the name Blake kept coming up. We had now contracted with uh, Blake out of East Windsor for, we'll say, eight years. And between um, what they have to offer, in my experience, I had a two point one. Billion gallons per day treatment plan underneath any Windsor locks. South Windsor, we had a treatment plan. I know most of the ins and outs, not the real specifics, but I know things that we have to do. We were having problems with this pump station, which is our main pump station down here on Little Post. And after doing research, it was um. I I don't know what you guys know about, but I'll explain it really is when you have, you know, changes in elevation, up and down, up and down. Um, when you're pumping that kind of material, you get air trapped and the pumps become air bound. You know, what happens is there are air valves at different points like height points on Old Post Road. So what we do now is every other year, we pop the manholes, we have our plate to go out there. They get dressed with the um, the tripods because it's a confined space. Then they go down and they actuate at these uh, or um. Move the air vents just to make sure everything's working. It's basically a big wall of a string and it has to. Bump every once in a while just to allow to let the air out. And since then, our pumps are working much better. We have uh, tried to, just as like with our trucks, how we'd say we're trying to buy mostly one or two different brands. We've taken, there were flight pumps down here. We've, we've converted those to be. Um, compatible with the different pump stations so that if we lose a pump here, we have two pumps on the shelf. One can go here, can get out there, big Y pump station, things like that. But things have changed a little bit. There's a lot more um, routine maintenance done, which has kept everything, you know, running pretty well. The biggest issue we have down here is when we have power surges, it'll blow out some of the uh, circuit boards or what have you. Uh, overall, it's been, it's been running good. We did add a new pump station down at the highway garage because of the the uh, wash station and. We're on city water now instead of well, so we now have five.
Thank you. Uh, so I was on the town council way back when, um, they were installing geothermal heating and cooling systems in the in the buildings. I was just curious, has has that been a successful? Uh, implementation? Have we seen good cost savings and then how about the maintenance of that equipment, which can generally be more expensive than traditional heating cooling systems?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'll I'll add on to that question. Um, uh, is there any plans to do any more of that in any of the any buildings that we have?
Not that I'm aware of at this point. Um, as far as the maintenance on it, it really hasn't been anything that's uh, um, come up. I mean, occasionally you'll have. Um, a wall unit that's that's not functioning correctly, but most of that's internal, so. We have a company that comes in that that gets on their computers and they can get the the valves to actuate or or. Uh, we don't do, we don't, we don't touch it, you know, the professionals do that.
Oh, it's a contractor.
Yes, but it has, uh, as far as I know, it's it's saved us a decent amount of money on fuel.
Great.
Questions? Oh, I I'm hoping you wouldn't mind taking a couple of minutes and. Um, talking to us about what we've seen in the capital budget for your department. There are a couple of big ticket items. Uh, at least in the one year and um. This is a great opportunity to, for you to sort of tell us why you need those things.
Okay, well. Those of you that were able to go on the tour, they got to see this truck thirty-two that has that big wing plow on the side. Um, I know the question had come up as to why it had such low mileage and why it was there, but. When you got to see the wing plow, it's, it takes probably an hour to move that whole. Front system just to open, able to check the fluids. So it was easier for years to just let that sit and just use it during the winter time. Um, the new truck that we're going to purchase is not going to have a wing plow. That was, they were designed for back when you used to get significant snowstorms. So two guys, operated two people, one person to drive, one sitting at passenger side. And what it basically did was it cut a shelf, maybe a foot and a half up, and it would push the rest of the snow on. This way, when you have another storm, you had a place to push it with, you know, the next pot. Um, one of the other trucks that you folks had the pleasure of seeing. We specialize in red duct tape because we filled in some of the holes where we have no fenders left and it's. It's it's a challenge, but it has gotten a lot better because of the the new wash bay that we have. I mean. You you saw how high that thing goes. If you, you know, you turn it on full blast, you can't hide salt anywhere in those vehicles with with this water. Um. As far as expense, everybody knows that everything is is going up. Right now, the last truck that we've ordered. I believe was somewhere around two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and it's a year and a half before we'll see it. And that doesn't mean that they won't come back to us in a year and a half and say, hey, the price is gone. We had that happen with the last payloader we bought. Or I'm sorry, not payloader, the uh, the backup we bought. And so we we just can't honor that proposal we gave you. We needed fifty thousand dollars more and that was, I think, two years ago. And if I said no, they'll sell it to another municipality. So, but we do have a brand new um, back on which is used for cleaning catch basins. But it also has the capability of a six hundred foot hose on the front, so we can jet out drainage lines, uh, culverts, things of that nature.
Ken, the biggest ticket item um. For DPW for year one is the the parks and facility garage update.
Yes.
I know some of us had an opportunity when we were doing the tour last uh, week to see the condition of the current garage. Can you just give us a really quick overview of what your plan is there?
Yep. The um, for those of you who don't know where it is, it's as you go into. Um, the lodge, it's the red metal building on the left hand side. I think it was the year before I got here, trying to conserve money, they turned the heat down, collapsed on that building. So they had to redo the whole, the roof of this thing. It's just a steel building. When you go inside, you can see the way they have to kitty corner and jockey every vehicle in there to get all the vehicles into fit. Um, that's the way it used to be at the highway garage, but they went in on an angle and if the very first vehicle didn't start. You had to tow that one up before you could move the rest of these vehicles. These aren't quite as bad because it has doors on both them, so we can. Uh, one of the the biggest highlights is we have an explosion proof room where we keep all our fuels and paints and everything. The platform above that is where the crew sits to. Hide their, eat their dinners and lunches and what have you, have their breaks. Um, along with being concerned about the explosion proof room not working. Um, when they go down to fire the equipment, all those diesel beams come right up to the ceiling and that's where these people are all sitting. They currently have no place down there to uh, get rest through a snowstorm. If it's a multi-day event or even all-night event. And you pull them in off the road at ten or eleven at night, say, get a couple hours sleep. There's no place for them to go. They have a a small meeting room, which is just chairs like this around the outside, which isn't conducive to anybody getting a good rest. Uh, our mechanic down there, he does the best he can with what he has, but you can't walk in a straight line from the door to his desk. Because he has so much stuff in the way and it's just, um. It's a nightmare. They do a great job. Um, the the building to the right of them is an old storage building. It's right now, it has multiple two by tens that go into the ground to keep the building from just falling over and self-imploding on itself. There's a, there was a house there that was taken down. There's a septic tank in a field which we already went out and looked at. If anything, we would replace the septic tank. That's cheap money. Um, but the field is operational. It was redone, I think, in eighty-five or eighty-seven. So that there wouldn't be a cost there and we'd like to put up a steel building where the part closest to the road. Which isn't really close, a couple hundred feet off the road, would be office space, um, resting areas, a lunchroom, training room, if you will. And then the backside is uh, be more storage for the equipment that's in that um, facility now.
And because you're building, you're proposing a second building, it wouldn't. Be that disruptive to operations?
No, because we would still operate and house that, you know, do our day-to-day operations in the old building until the new one is ready. And then we would shift over, which would then open up some more space inside for storage of equipment or. Uh, actually give the mechanic a place to, you know, put his, all his books and owner's manuals and things like that.
Um, the other big ticket item on the capital budget that's under your purview is the paving and road management. I know you, I know you have a great system for this. Can you just give us a a brief interview of how you've been managing the street paving?
Yeah, what we used to do, um. We hired a firm called V H B and they would commit and they would go out and look at all our roads. And they would assign everything a PCI rating, a table condition index. And the goal was after. First, five year, five million dollar road bond was to try to get all the roads up to seventy percent. Now, we're not close. We still have roads that are down in the fifties and sixties. Um. I had talked with Brian and with Lisa Hancock and I said, you know, we have to do another bond this coming year. Uh, but I would recommend it being higher because realistically, we did, I believe, three and a half miles this year and it cost us a million dollars. It's, yeah, it's the. There's, you can't control it. We used to do five, five and a half miles for that same million and this year it was down to three and a half. And the process that um. We try to use, if we can, is uh, what's called cold in place. They come in, we remove all the curving. Pop all the catch basins tops off, company comes in, grinds everything, reclaims it, puts it right back down, grades it, rolls it. Then we addressed all the catch basins, whether they need to be repaired, replaced. Patch around them and then uh, put the final coat on the top. Then of course it's curving, rolling, seating. Um, we did thirty-one thousand feet of curb this year. Backfilling all of that took us well into November, you know, and we were out there every day except for the driving segment of pouring rain, but. Um. We have a lot of roads in town. When I first started here, we did uh, Sherry Circle, Virginia, that one there, that hadn't been done since the fifties. Hadn't been touched. Hadn't been touched. And there are still roads that are crumbling out there. We have the um. Neighborhood, High Ridge, Joe Savitt, that whole neighborhood up there, which is due. Not this coming year, but the following year. And if you go down Joe Savitt, there's areas where it's just on to gravel. We just go in, you know, spread asphalt with tobacco earth and then roll it just to try to keep things together. So I suggested to Brian and to Lisa that we increase that to instead of five million to like seven and a half million. Gives us a little more each year. I don't know that that pot is supposed to be our parking lots. You know, I have, I have the firehouses. I have, you know, this building, have. Numerous buildings where we should be looking at, but we just can't at this point. You know, we were, I was chastised pretty hard when I did the uh parking lot over across farms instead of doing roads. How are we going to open up a a playground for, you know, challenge people without being able to get to it?
I know one of the concerns I've heard in previous years is that um you only have the staff to handle about a million dollars worth of. Budget.
Yeah, what we've done is we have, uh we go up every year for bids. For assistance to do any catch bases. This year we had, I believe it was eighty five or ninety catch bases. Our staff did probably forty five and a contractor did the other forty, which helped considerably, but. One year we had a contractor committed backfill the line of curbing at a. Truck set up with an auger and they just, and they moved right along for us, but. Money's like, I mean, in order to do, if we picked the neighborhoods we picked. In order to be able to finish them, I could, I didn't have the money to hire a contractor to come in and do things like that.
Well, thank you for that work on the capital budget. Did I spark any other questions with anyone?
So when it comes to roads. I'm assuming that, you know, a road like Sherry Circle, like you meant, wasn't supposed to get, it's supposed to be paved more frequently than every like thirty years. What what is the the schedule there for repaving roads? Like how often do you try ideally to?
Ideally, yeah, ideally residential neighborhood, you could probably get twenty, twenty five years out of a road. Roads like Grant Hill, New Road, uh Cider Mill, those kind of roads. Those things should be looking at every twelve to fifteen years and we we just can't.
Scott, can you explain the system?
What, PHB?
Yes, no, on the rating, yeah.
Yeah, they they, what they do is uh for the this rating, Jacob, they um. They they look at whether it's got longitudinal, latitudinal cracking, swelling, what have you. They'll come out and like this company we use that comes in to do the um golden place, they come out, they pour tests to make sure you have enough material there. To to uh make a good mix. If not, then they'll say, you know, maybe you should just go to the complete uh rehab on the road. Those kind of roads, like I said, they'll last, you know, a neighborhood's gonna last probably twenty years. Some of these other roads. They they just don't have the um the base to them, the drainage. I mean, we're, you know, we're a rural town. We have over three thousand catch basins in town and realistically, you probably have closer to six thousand, but. A lot of it just leaches off and by leaching off, it breaks away the edges of the road.
There was a question I was gonna ask is uh because runoff costs a lot of damage to roads. Seriously shorten the life of a road. Do we have anything in our in our budget to sort of to say, okay, this road should normally have a twenty year life, but because of drainage issues, blah, blah, blah. We could save money down the road by, you know, putting proper irrigation into this into this area and fixing it. I don't know if that's.
We'll look at different things, but I, when, when most of the drainage and installers went in. It was back in there where they used what they call asphalt, asphalt coated corrugated metal pipe. Which is just a galvanized, you know, ripple pipe. They covered it with asphalt and after a while the asphalt wears away and then the pipe. Shumbles and implodes. We did a job two years ago on South River Road before we paved it. We did what's called slip lining. We actually slid two pieces of plastic ADS pipe, which is advanced drainage system. It's a corrugated pipe on the outside, but smooth on the inside. And we slid it inside, braced it so that it would stay in position. And we poured holes in the road and pumped in a special concrete throw. So now you have, there's no void around it. You have a brand new plastic pipe that goes through. We built uh end walls on the end. For a lot less than it would cost us to rip it up, put in a brand new cover and it was literally no disruption to the traffic. So those are things for the county engineer that, you know, we discussed with the town engineer and sort of.
Any other question? Scott, thank you so much.
Thank you. Just be nice when it comes to my budget. Brian beats me up enough.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, thanks.
All right, we've made it to eight thirty three, which is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. We do have an appointment uh before us from the betting committee. Do you? You guys want to talk about that a little bit or you're?
You you dealt with it ninety percent of it. Yeah, we had a um application from Fred Day Lewis for the Historic District Commission. Joe and I reviewed his resume, um his cover letter. We sent him a couple of questions via email. He's got a professional background. He's a resident of Historic District. He's attended numerous HTC meetings. And I won't speak for Joe, but I think we we both felt that he was qualified. The town would be well served having um Fred on the Historic District Commission, so we wanted to put it before the councils. That way, um the HTC is fully staffed with membership.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion then to approve the appointment in eight point three of our agenda? Thanks Jen, is there a second? Second by Chris. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Uh I, at this point. Am also looking for a motion to amend our agenda to add um eight point four. The appointment of alternates to planning and zoning and zoning board of appeals.
So moved, second.
Thank you. So moved by Chris, second by Jacob. Is there any discussion about adding this to our agenda? All in favor? Uh so that's unanimous. Thank you. During the last couple of days, we have gotten submissions from uh the town committees. Uh the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee to fill uh some vacancies on planning and zoning. And zoning board of appeals. Uh those um recommendations are for Amanda Hickey as an alternate. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh Brian Mead is an alternate for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Jean Fisk as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals. And she even told me what their terms are supposed to be. You got it. Jacob knows what their terms are gonna be. Go ahead and tell us.
I'll be for the term November nine, twenty twenty three to uh November eleven, twenty twenty five.
Thank you. So is there any discussion about these? Yeah, Chris?
Uh just um as liaison planning and zoning, I uh to just pass along that they, you know, strongly. I agree that uh seating alternates is important because when they have, um when they don't have full membership, then. So the town isn't as well served because there's less people making decisions. So I appreciate uh the chair and vice chair for having this put onto the agenda for tonight. I think it'll really help the Planning and Zoning Commission, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right then, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Amanda Hickey as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission? With the term ending eleven. Eleven eleven, twenty twenty five. Brian Mead is an alternate to Planning and Zoning Commission with term ending eleven eleven, twenty twenty five. And Jean Fisk is an alternate to the zoning board of appeals with a term ending eleven eleven, twenty twenty five. Second by Jacob, moved by Chris, second by Jacob. Any further discussion on that? No? All in favor? So that is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for those three individuals for their volunteer service as well as Mr. Day Lewis. Next item on our agenda is old business of which we have none. And then it's to the report of the town manager. So take it away.
Uh thank you so much. Um resident trooper contractor, while we're while we're um on that, I did have a a chance to casually run into some people from. Uh legal affairs in um at the state level uh at a function and I, you know. I'm not overly optimistic that we'll get an MOU, but as you can see, um we're gonna get the e- end result. Uh again, it comes down to setting precedents um with the other towns, so hopefully uh one way or another, I want to work through this. The uh I told you that we have a meeting coming up this week with the SALT uh task force. Uh the Rees Across America is uh Saturday. It's, you know, every town or not every town, a lot of towns do it. I would ask that you try to make it uh on your schedule and attend. I know Kay, you're gonna be there, right? Uh there there's a chance, I I don't know if you're any, I sent it to you and Jacob and pushed to media today as well to to show up for that as well. And and uh I think it's gonna be a a good event. I have no idea what the weather's gonna be. I'm starting to look. We got the bill for the archaeological dig on the town green. It was, I believe, just over seven thousand dollars uh for that. Our ice rink is up, not operational at Crandall's. It's it's quite a process. It doesn't just freeze and we go skate on it. It has to be done in layers. Certain thicknesses and there's there's a bit of a science to it. Uh but but it is up and ready to go should we uh should we see a cold stretch coming. For point of reference, the town of Vernon used theirs once last year, one day, I believe. Uh but ours, but we wanted it up. Uh we will be keeping an eye on it. The public safety consultant that we discussed with last council, again, someone to come in and look at. Um do we have the right amount of apparatus? Uh we've put aside thirty thousand dollars for, the cheapest one was forty five. Uh ranging up to over seventy. Uh we're gonna start nibbling around on that, try to get it down into our uh range, obviously. Uh the menorah lighting uh yesterday was fantastic. I thank everyone for coming. Uh I did not discuss it one single bit prior to, but I was concerned for safety, so I thank the Connecticut State Police, A, for. Uh assisting me with that and and it was a good uh safe event, but understand that sometimes I don't uh mention these things, but I'm working beside, behind the scenes. To make sure that it is um it is covered. As you can see around the state, there was some incidents at other menorah lightings. I wasn't uh. I'm glad it didn't happen to us, so I'll leave it there. Uh media was there too, another good, more good coverage uh for our town. The storm was a a big dud, uh just a lot of rain, uh but again, we we have to prepare myself. Uh Director Lapp and his staff and our um our fire chief is also the Public Safety and Emergency Management Director. Um so you'll see, I'll put a lot of stuff out on social media, but understand I'm 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 preparing, we're preparing. The best we can. We we work arm and are hand in hand with um Demis Department, Department of Emergency Management, Homeland Security. And we have to go by uh their direction to some degree as to what uh they're predicting uh and and work with them, so. And they were they were coming out pretty hard at the storm, so we followed suit. Either way, it's all good um preparation for us for when there is an event. Uh um and again, it builds confidence in the town that we're not just winging it here, that we're we're preparing ahead of time. We we had staffing come in. Early, assuming there was gonna be winds. It just all, it just turned into a lot of rain, but I thank our staff for doing that. Tree lighting. Two weeks ago, uh went well on the green, well attended, uh shows how great our town green uh can be and. I think we all agree it can be even better um moving forward. Council goals, uh I know we're gonna work soon to to get through those. I I will assist, I'll prepare a list of things to consider. I believe we got you the previous council goals. Have you ever sent that up? Uh so start to give that a review. But I understand this, in speaking with our finance director, we do need it by a certain time, I believe it's in March. To be in our budget book because it, we put our budget book in for certain um accreditations, basically, that that also lead to our triple A bond rating. So plenty of time, but ju- just keep it uh on your radar. That's all I have for now.
Any questions for the town manager on his verbal or written?
Let me hit some more stuff. Um we're a revenue collector that uh. New tax collector, uh basically, uh we're going, uh that that process uh was ongoing today. Library circulation assistant, I believe we're we're gonna hire for that. Uh I mean, we've made a decision on that. The library director of services, we're, we are immediately close uh to uh filling that. Uh and as well as a DPW uh labor. We hired a new firefighter, a new executive assistant in uh public works. And a new assistant human uh services director. None of the above have started yet. Uh they were all positions that were vacant. Those were not added positions at all. And I believe that, oh, sorry, keep going here. We put out a an RFP for a new town engineer or additional town engineers. Looking at the costs and the product, uh some consternation that I've had on certain projects, we decided it's time to sniff around. Other engineers. Uh we had some come in and make some presentations, all of whom are um, I believe, well, well equipped to handle. The jobs that town needs engineered and they will all do it at a cheaper rate than we're currently paying um now. So it was, it was just. Uh good news. I have confidence in in, we don't need to hire just one or use just one engineer. We can use multiple. Some engineers are good at something, some are others, and I think uh we have a couple uh in front of us that are that are just fantastic. And again. Looking at the pricing and such, I'm I'm upset with myself. I didn't sniff around this last year. So I'm glad to be uh moving in a good direction uh with our town, uh with our engineer uh firms that we're gonna have available to ourselves, that's all.
Thank you for mentioning the engineer. That was my first question from your town manager report. Is this um, is this for next fiscal year? Is that for you looking for services ongoing for?
Sure, we can start, we can pick up and start running. Look, when we go over the operations, that, you know, we're gonna. Look at the the costs and everything and the jobs that we have uh coming up, but, you know, one of the, one of the main things that we have uh cooking are. We want to connect uh the green to the rest of the town and this this choke point here. Um is problematic and one of the firms is incredibly experienced at exactly that kind of stuff. State highway, um state land. Historic districts, everything, they 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 covered it. And then the other, the other firm uh is probably better at the smaller stuff, the day to day needs. The town sidewalk here and there, um drainage here and there, that sort of thing. So um, yeah, that we can start, we can start hitting on that as soon as we are, I'm ready. So soon we can.
I noticed that in the manager's report, there was a note from the building department that they rendered a significant effort. And time assisting a property agent, a properties agent to apply to the HTC. For solar panels on a prominent property on town green. I read that directly from your report. Is this unusual? Like, I I hadn't seen anything like that in a town manager's report in a previous one, so I, it caught my attention.
This this the circumstance is, yes, unusual. The fact that Jim went above and beyond to help a resident. Not unusual and certainly indicative where he does, but. It was problematic for him to try to help uh this, the the, that was the UCC, the Congregational Church, trying to get solar panels. Uh and the absolute wrestling match it was um to to finally get those solar panels, which. I I I disagree with the fight that the church had to put up uh to get those solar panels to eventually surrender and put them just off of the the historic district. But at any rate, it was, it it, I asked Jim to put stuff into his manager's report um that. Chewed up a significant amount of his time uh during the the twigs, the last report and and that one started to. Really start to put the numbers up. I I didn't, certainly didn't tell him to put that in there. It showed up there organically.
Sure, no. Um I wonder if there's anything that we could be recommending to the HTC to. Improve their application process so that we don't have to spend so much staff time uh supporting. A a third continuation of a public hearing. Um I would assume that the fact that it went back three times is. The big part of why that was such a, such a, a large amount of gems talking.
In my opinion and the opinion of others, that their their understanding of the solar uh laws and the way they apply to historic districts is is wrong. Uh we have options. Uh we have options. We could change. Uh we could pull the solar um specifically, solar specific specific stuff out of their hands and out of their process uh to review. Um that would take some uh legal doing, but it's certainly possible. That comes under that recommendation from um a zoning official who's a very, very, very high level in these United States of these these matters. So uh we we certainly, we have some options to look at uh in doing that. But uh we're having some success in nibbling in a way. Um.
Okay.
One at a time.
Sure. Thank you. Um and the other, my one more question from your town manager's report. I noticed from uh the grant managers section that there uh she had a meeting uh to discuss a potential solar farm at former landfill. I know this is something that the previous council, you you brought to us um several months ago. I love the idea, so I'm wondering if you have any updates or any more information that you might provide to us on solar developments in town?
That was on Thursday. Um just past Thursday, uh they I saw um when they got here, I greeted them. But uh they went out to go tinker around there. You know, you hear the term brownfield, and you think that dumps a brownfield. And and I guess in in plain language, it's much worse than a brownfield. So it's not a brownfield. It's something, it's just super disaster field, I think it would be called. Um and we wanna, we're gonna we're gonna look at any option to get solar out there. And, you know, Megan uh does such a fantastic job. Um she's willing to entertain it and go out there and show them around. Uh the the dump, for the the, for those who don't know, and and yeah, I'm dating myself. It was a dump when I was a youngster, then just a transfer station uh was capped properly by our research, and we couldn't put solar panels on there. Problem is, forest is growing on top of it. And now we would have to pay for the removal of the the trees and um and then put the panels on. And as we crunch the numbers, really, as these companies come in, and they wanna, they wanna put solar up there too. Uh they try to crunch the numbers as well. Um we haven't been able to get there yet. So no update yet. Um we don't think in positive this company that came in and hopefully uh, you know, we can, we can move to put solar panels there. It's just dead land at this point.
Where's the land right?
Old Stafford Road, driveway out, it's on the right there. Um there's, you'll see like a bunch of uh chain link fence on the right. Used to be, you know, sort of, you bring all your paint and oil deck or whatever, you know, you had at your house.
Any other questions for the town manager's report?
You mentioned, you say something about an executive secretary from DPW?
No, just there. Well, yeah, the well, a secretary for DPW that.
Is that what Scott, is that the position that Scott was talking about, where he used to have a part-time secretary that would like handle all the pages?
No, that got zapped a long time ago.
So what, so what's this?
This is his secretary. We, I kidnapped his his secretary and hired her in the the town manager's office, which left a vacancy, so he filled it. Uh that's all it is. He's talking about, you have a, you have uh, they used to have two secretaries down at the highway garage, one for parks and one for highway that that handled all the data and all the information, you know. And I don't know if he spoke clearly enough, but let's say you wanted to find out, hey, how much did you, how much have you spent in repairs on on all these trucks? He's, you know, you're gonna have the mechanic go in there and right pull it out and and, you know, the they, what the consultant recommends, or which most towns have, is uh a system, by the way, we have the system to enter all this data into, and then we can, you know, farm through the data and look at all of all all that and make, you know, better decisions uh moving forward. We have no one to enter it in into. And that's why we were looking at uh tinkering around with iron and a part-time uh admin for all of DPW to handle a lot of the records and such down there. If if you had taken a walk through um and and if you want, I can re, I can certainly uh schedule it for 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 you three that that didn't get a shot. It's it's an eye, it's an eye opener. I mean, you saw how cramped that building, we couldn't even walk from one. It's not like they were staging it because we were coming. And I'm always suspicious of all that kind of shenanigans. The outside was, you know, there's trucks in every spot outside as well um that were parked that were leaving outside and equipment outside all the time. It's just, they are, they are packed in there like sardines.
Okay, so this secretary you're talking about, you still, he's replacing. Uh they're obviously too busy to to take on additional work.
Yes, that they handle, they handle everything right now, all they can, uh the entirety of uh DPW. Uh and that that's the admin side of the the cemetery is is a big uh lift for her as well. So it's it's just a lot. Just all the billing, you know, all the budgeting and everything, you know, that in the the tracking of, you know, just every, everything they, everything they spend, you know, and it's a lot.
Yeah, great.
So I was, uh just just so you know, for for me's um not coming for some of these displays, I was a laborer for DPW for four years. While I was attending college. So I've been in that cramped building, you know, definitely. I've eaten lunch above the the road. So.
Fantastic.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. So that we just turn the page now. Adoption of minutes. So we have um meeting minutes from uh the past three meetings before us. And yeah, go ahead, Jenny.
Uh so I wanted to make a motion to to correct um some some problems with the errors on the minute. I don't know if we should go one at a time or make just one big motion for all the, because I know we're dealing with November fourteenth, November thirtieth special and November.
The executive session.
Executive session and the regular special meeting. Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we do it one at a time?
Okay, so I'll start with November fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and make a motion to correct the following errors. Uh the minutes do not reflect that Mr. Noonan did not vote on the following items due to his absence. Uh I respectfully ask to correct the following uh thirteen point three, the motion to add thirteen point three K to the agenda. Thirteen point three K, the motion to add thirteen point four to the agenda, and number twenty-one. Um.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-one was the last one. This is uh.
Agenda item twenty-one?
Yeah, he he didn't vote in the bottom. Yeah. Um.
If I go to that one, yeah.
No, I just didn't know what to remember.
Uh, sorry, that was included with the the previous. Um as well as twelve B, the minutes do not reflect that Ms. Stargarter would ask the council members to email their preferred board and commissions assignments by November twenty-four. Uh item number thirteen, the minutes did not reflect Ms. Stargarter's part comment, I'm sorry, regarding the appointment being um a great step forward for the board events to meet as a complete nine-member board when they have their first meeting. And our hope was that the appointment is a step towards collaboration. And last, uh sixteen point one says Mr. Noonan's motion to approve the minutes as laid out in sixteen point one. Um I believe he had left the meeting at that point, and it was Mr. Moran's motion.
Okay. Is there a second for the motion to approve the minutes corrected? Is that what your motion was?
That is my motion. Should, yes, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chris made the second. Is there any further discussion about the minutes for November fourteen? No? Then all in favor of approving the corrected minutes?
I.
Oh, sorry. So that is unanimous. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a second motion uh for corrections to the following errors for the um November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three special meeting executive session. Um I'm asking the court to reflect that Mr. Shea arrived at six twenty-two PM. And uh finally, with the vote to go into executive session with six zero zero with Mr. Shea not in attendance.
Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Thank you. That was Chris seconding. Is there any further discussion about approving the corrected minutes? No? All in favor?
I.
So that is unanimous.
And my final motion is to correct the errors for the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three special meeting uh as follows. In item six point one, the summary does not state that there's no public input offered during the public hearing. In item eight point three, the minutes do not reflect that Ms. Hancock will continue to provide a similarly formatted quarterly update at the second council meeting after the end of the quarter. And finally, item ten, public safety update, says thirty minutes, but Mr. Fuller corrected his comments and backed up the ambulance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Any further comments about the corrected minutes?
No.
One second.
How did you uh, you obviously didn't memorize. Did you go back and re-review the uh the video?
No, the three minutes are in the packet.
No, but the corrections to the.
The corrections to the I mean, we kind of collaborated. There was a few suggestions, and I instead of having a whole bunch of different motions.
Oh, that's a lot of detail.
Oh, yeah.
Very good.
It is, yeah.
Very much.
No, that's, that's fine. Yes, Lisa's got a question.
Item eleven three on the agenda is hybrid regular meeting, isn't it? The last motion was for special.
Yeah, the um eleven thirty meeting, we had two special meetings. So um the the motion then, Jen, is to approve the eleven thirty special meeting, the one that started at seven PM.
Correct, right? Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
No, you didn't. Just wanted to make sure that.
Yes, absolutely. So are there any further comments, questions before we vote on the corrected minutes for eleven thirty, the second special meeting that day?
No.
All in favor?
I.
I, that is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, Chris again. All right. Uh the next item is correspondence to council. I know Ms. Udencheck is uh not here, but did do we have, she sent that on to us?
Yeah, I believe it was uh we received three emails pertaining to the black plus. I believe that's what she said.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And and a special thanks to Colleen for uh for sending that, even though she's not here. Um the next item is the chairperson's report. Uh the menorah lighting last night was really fun. Thank you so much, Brian, and to Rabbi Yosef Walabowski. Did I do it? I tried.
You're in the neighborhood.
Yeah, uh for making this event happen and for the wonderful words of peace and community. The fire show was really cool. Um that was really fun, too. So um that really kept my kids' attention after the gels was flying through the air. So was great. Thank you so much and happy Hanukkah. Um the the chair hour, I held chair on the seventh of December. The board of ed chair and I, uh the board of ed chair joined me. We had one resident attend, and uh Brian and Sarah Beth came to say hi. So it was great to see you guys. Um it was really great for me and Tony Hope to sit down and talk, chat a little bit. And I hope we can continue these co-chair hours, um and maybe bring in more chairs for elected and appointed boards too. So I'm gonna put the invitation out there. Um the Talon Fire Department Christmas tour is ongoing, even in the rain. The pictures this weekend that came in of people who were outside in the rain, were you outside in the rain?
I was.
Yeah. So uh thank you to the Talon Fire Department. I know this has been a little bit of a bittersweet um process for them, but they're really, they're doing a great job. And it's, everyone in town talks about it. So thank you so much to them. Uh the Reeds Across America event is this upcoming Saturday at noon at Valley View Cemetery. Um I will be there. I hope other members of town council can join. That would be great. Uh we are going to meet, just a reminder, the town council will meet next week, Tuesday night for a special meeting to talk about our vision statement and something else and goals, the
Vision.
Mission and vision and goals. So that's, that's next week. And um I think that's it for me. Next on the agenda is communications petitions from council people. Does anybody have anything? Yeah, we saw.
Super reminder one. Buzz, I was just gonna say, I know you took a nice picture on the last meeting. Was that gonna, could you go up on the website? It's been ready to go. Oops, did I, what did I do with it?
If someone sends it to me, I can put it out.
Yeah, we'll get it to you. Thank you. Thank you. I didn't notice that. We'll get it up. This was, that's a good picture, so.
I'm very camera shy. I don't like focusing dishes. Gladly. That is all.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. We'll make sure we get that set up.
We'll get it tomorrow.
Go ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to uh thank you, Brian, for the menorah lighting. I had never been to one before.
It's great.
I was, I kind of had to reserve myself, wanted to get the chocolates that were thrown down from the fucking truck. I didn't do that, but that was great. So thank you for bringing that back to town. I think it's an awesome, pretty new event, along with uh the tree lighting, which is also fantastic. Um also, the facility tours were very informative, so they should put that together.
Does anybody else have anything? No, no? Um, one more thing, I'm sorry to jump in. Can anyone who hasn't had the opportunity yet to order town like shirts and sweatshirts from town council, can we come see you?
My dynamic, hardworking uh executive assistant, Sarah Beth Nivison, was kind enough to drag the heavy box up here herself. Uh believe me, I heard about it. Uh then.
Oh, you know what?
We're prepared to do it.
We'll do it afterwards. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Number fifteen on our agenda is public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. We will start in the room, and then we will go virtually and back and forth until everyone has had their opportunity to speak. So in the room? God. Someone, sorry.
Okay. You'll get it after a few more years of me being here.
No, I'm sorry.
Hello, town council. Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mount Springer. I heard more talk by Mr. Fuller this evening about the town of Langen strategizing and having more meetings. And while it sounds good, I'm in need of action. While I understand the need to make sure that actions are deliberate and pointed, the town has had well over a year to plan the next action, seeing as how it was determined that the well drilled on my property in March of twenty twenty-two was not viable a month later of that year. Furthermore, the initial Langen report that spoke of my property that said the town is culpable for my salt issues was produced in early of January twenty twenty-three. We are nearly a year later, and nothing has happened beyond talk. What plans are being put forward to address my issues? When is someone gonna come out and view my property from Langen? When are we going to do another site survey? When are the test wells going to be done? When are we going to drill a new deeper well? When am I going to have a resolution to this? Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to participate? You can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. No, anyone else from the room? Anyone else from virtual? Okay. Uh the last item on our agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved by Jen. Is there a second? Second by Jacob. Is there any objection to adjournment? Any objection? Any objection? Then without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.